Okay, at this time we'll now resume the school board workshop of March 9th, 2020. The time is 2:31. So continuing.
Yes.
Any other questions? Dr. Pruitt, thank you.
All right, the next one that there was a question about was the athletic and activities assistant supplement. This is a supplemental position, so it would be available to current instructional Talc members at high schools to assist the athletic directors. So any other questions on that?
You're asking if it's full-time at a classroom?
Yeah, it's a supplement.
Okay, that's supplement, okay.
Same thing on the assistant department chairperson. There will be guidelines in place that you have to be a certain size department in order to have that. We haven't established that exact number yet. We're kind of looking around the state to see, you know, what is a good number that an assistant would be warranted, again, a supplemental position for that. Same thing with assistant team leader.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, Dr. Pruitt partially answered my question on that. The department chair is also a supplemental, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I know in some places, rather than giving a supplement, the department chair sometimes is given an extra planning period to conduct duties. It just really depends on the school district, but that's supplemental, so.
Yeah, we don't really have, that I'm aware of, much of that anymore. There's just with the class size and trying to keep that down, I can't, I'm not aware.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying that I know there are different models, because I've worked under.
Right.
I've worked under both models, both as a supplement and also as a free period, but in, it depends upon the duties that are assigned for the chairperson. Okay, so we will, before any of these are actually initiated, we will come up with guidelines on, you get this much, or actually, in some cases, the department may be small enough that there wouldn't be a need for an assistant, right?
Oh, absolutely, that's correct.
Okay, so we will, that was the main thing.
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure that we're going to establish.
Yes.
Guidelines on the numbers required before the.
Absolutely, yes.
That's, that was my, that was my question.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn, Mrs. Morgan, and then Ms. Gittens.
So my question is, I guess, how we arrive at the need for these things. I mean, just the fact that other places in the state do it doesn't necessarily mean it's best practice. So I think rather than hearing you say, this is what other districts do, I would like to hear you say, well.
Best practice is this particular function, and in other parts of the state, this is how we satisfy that requirement.
And that is exactly it, so I apologize, I didn't communicate that appropriately. At the beginning, when I said that these requests come through us through a variety of ways, based on needs that we're seeing, whether it come out of, you know, Talc Labor Management, or whether it come out of principal leads, because they're seeing that there's that need within the schools when they're out there, so it can come to us in a variety of ways. And then what we do is go in and we investigate around the state. Are other people doing it? Is what is being asked for, is that, you know, is that out of line with, you know, nobody else that, you know, doesn't share that need? And then again, it's brought through the Supplement Committee and vetted through that process, so thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, my question is at the end, I can hold off. It's number, after number seven, so I'll get back to it, because it's kind of generic about this as well.
Okay. So the next one was the Grants and Resource Development Contact Person. This was a request that came through Academic Services, through grants, really looking at how we can expand and find more grants, and by having the supplemental position. We're not requiring that the person write grants, but we are requiring that they are the contact person that helps disseminate that information, you know, to members at the school, to let them know that these grants are available, and to provide a support for those folks. The idea is to increase the number of school grants, resource sharing, and business partnerships. And they're going to try to, you know, track this, and in order to see what impact the position has, to get some metrics to make sure that it has a return on investment for having somebody being paid and focused on doing that work.
I think Ms. Patrika.
Oh, sorry. So I'll use Nathan Buehler as an example. He wrote a grant for steel drums, and I'm wondering whether there's, he did that in a school. So is there a way to have this position that we're creating here by supplement, share that information with the district, instead of just the district sharing with schools, but sharing with the district so that teachers everywhere who need steel drums can pursue the same grant? Am I making sense?
Yes, you are, and I do think that's part of their planning, is to figure out how they can do this sort of warehouse of information, if you will, so that other schools could take advantage of the same opportunities. So I see it as a, what has been explained to me would be a two-way sharing between the district and the individuals, and then individuals being able to go in and look and see what other schools are doing.
So that, I don't think that was clear in the job description.
Okay.
So I would like to see that updated to include gathering of information from schools at the district level to be disseminated, if that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Morgan.
So that raises another question in my mind. Marshall Bauer has just sent out a request to all the schools, asking for who their partners are. And partners are basically people who are underwriting, like Lowe's does, the gardens. Is that, are we looking at this as that kind of position as well? Where you're looking for partnerships as well as grant, I mean, because.
Partnering, yes.
It is? Okay.
Yes, it is partnering.
All right, thank you.
Because the way Ms. Kennedy explained is that it would be not only grants, but the resource sharing and the business partnerships.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
And then I think, Ms. Gittens, you were referring to the supplement positions versus increased teacher salaries for all? Did you have, was there a specific question, or?
Yeah, it's kind of in line with what Ms. Morgan was saying. We just seem to recently have been getting a lot of supplemental positions. And when I think about how equitable that is, that, you know, you've got a staff of 150 people, and only this small group gets an opportunity to have more, you know, salary. And I'm just, I'm just wondering, have we looked at increasing the salary for everyone as opposed to giving supplements to some? And it may be something with the, you know, the Talc and spout to discuss, but as we keep increasing supplements, it's opportunities, but it's not, I mean, we all know, it's not always equitable. It's whoever administration decides they want to do this, so it doesn't make it equitable for everybody to have an opportunity to have an increased salary. And that's what I'm wondering. I mean, if you were going to offer somebody, you know, a few thousand dollars more in their salary as opposed to a supplement that can come and go, have we really looked at that? And it may be a.
Well, what I'll say to you is that, as I said at the beginning, these are all bargained. Everything about this is bargained, and part of the bargaining process, and what, the amount of the supplements, the increase in the supplements, anything associated with the supplements, and even bringing them forward, are part of the bargaining process. The amount of money, when you put the total dollars on the amount of money that goes towards supplements, doesn't really even put a dent in giving teachers even a $50 raise, because there's 6,000 of them. So it, but yeah, I mean, it's always part and discussed as part of the bargaining process.
Well, because, you know, in trying to maintain teachers, and if you're not in that level or echelon that gets to do the supplements, and yet you need some supplemental income as well, I don't know, it's a bone of contention for me, but I understand.
Well, I would also say that one of the things that is of interest to the district, and I believe to Talc, is that when we do have instructional staff that are going above and beyond, and contributing in a way that is more than another teacher, that we want to be able to financially reward them for that extra time and effort that they're putting in. And I would also say that, in my experience, in my current role, what you're describing in terms of how the supplements are given, that that is not the norm of what I experience and I hear from staff in my current role. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm saying that it is not the majority or the norm, that our most principals are very thoughtful about the supplements and who receives them, and provide all staff the opportunity to apply for and take on. I will even submit to you that we have schools that we can't get people to take the supplements. So I would say to you that we have, I hear more about principals struggling to get teachers to be willing to take the supplements than I do people feeling that they were somehow not being considered for a supplement, in my experience.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Morgan, Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Patrika.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Vaughn.
Oh, I was just gonna, since Dr. Pruitt said that, I was going to echo what she said, unless things have changed in the six years since I've been at Estero. There were things like, I did A-Team for five years, and that was one big, I mean, there are a lot of supplements, a lot of the clubs and those sort of things, and actually, for some of them, even department chair, people are like, I don't want to do that. And so that was my experience, that it really wasn't a battle for these things.
And Ms. Patrika.
Yeah, and I just wanted to address Superintendent Chief's cabinet and this board's commitment to increase teacher pay for all. In my time on the board, and I might be exaggerating by one year, but I know that we have provided teacher pay increases that are greater than the increases in budget that have been provided to us by the state. So the commitment is definitely there for increased teacher pay for all. I just, I just really wanted to clarify our record on that.
Yeah, thank you for that, yeah, because it definitely, you know, we've seen about 1%, 1.6%, yet we have consistently given 3% or higher every year that we've been given those small amount of increases from the state. So thank you for that. There's been, there has been a huge commitment and a lack of resources in areas at the district level, in an effort to make sure that all of that money was going to teachers.
And some tough decisions, some tough cuts.
Some very tough decisions.
That have caused some pushback, not just to the administration, but to the board as well, so.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Gittens.
Well, since they're discussing that on that same vein, did, what was our final decision on the millage? I know it was discussed, and then it was not, and then it was, and actually, I don't know where we left it. And if you need to get back to that.
Well, and that was a question that I was going to bring up, and I was actually going to ask. I don't know if Dr. Decemore could just provide us one more time, that you want to, one little bit of information that you provided about the potential resources that would be generated by the millage, and I know that our union representatives have been advocating for that, and I recently just asked the question of the superintendent, and my note to him, what is the final board decision on the referendum for millage? Because, you know, there's some statistics about what has happened around the state with districts going out for the millage on top of the sales tax. So I was not present at the last meeting where that was discussed, and I think that the potential is there, so I would like for us to bring that back up, and thank you, Mrs. Gittens, for mentioning that first. So at one point, you gave us a presentation regarding what would be the potential income.
Right, we just, we just did that a couple weeks ago, right? Mm-hmm. So my understanding was that the, based on the conversation that we had that day, that where I thought we left with the, you know, consensus at the table, was that after discussing the extensive timeline and background work that had been done with our sales tax initiative, we understood that there was much groundwork and much background to be done, and so it was kind of left with staff to, you know, come up with a kind of framework around how that background work would be done, knowing that we have much to do, you know, to create an understanding before we felt we would be ready for the question to be asked. So that was my understanding of what the consensus was when we left the table after that conversation.
So Dr. Decemore, how many times have you given us that presentation over the last several years regarding the millage?
The one about the operating millage, we, that was the first time that we had discussed the operating millage at this table. The conversations that had been leading up to that before then were really surrounding the sales tax conversation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn.
If I may make a suggestion, this whole topic seems to be one that will fit in in our discussion of the new schedules, because I've heard from numerous teachers, the questions about, will we be paid for the extra time? And, yeah, I have a similar, I know where we left it. We left it with, not this year, that was my opinion, of where we left it. It was very vague, but not this year, there wasn't enough time on the millage, but I think it's one that would be very appropriate to add in with our discussion of the new schedule, and what that means for extra pay or not for teachers.
I was going to say, I know that our directive from staff is to continue to work on what it would look like if we were to receive the millage, and so I know that all the various divisions are working on, if, you know, given this amount, here's what that, we would recommend that it be used for, given this amount, and that we're working on that as we speak, so I do know that.
But there was no, there was the recognition, I thought the last word on it, and it was from Dr. Atkins, I believe, was that this was something we want to look at, but I believe it was left for long-term. I believe that it was left at that, when we looked at the guidelines for how long it took to plan and educate the public on the sales tax, that we just hadn't brought it forward early enough, not that a couple of us didn't try, but that it was not brought forward early enough, and that it wasn't going to be enough time to really educate the public.
Right, thank you. So that's a good suggestion, that we incorporate that further, along with budget and schedule changes. And Ms. Jordan.
No, I was just going to ask if we could continue on.
Yeah. I was going to say, I skipped over, Ms. Gittens, you'd asked about the dispatcher transportation services, asking for red lines showing how it was revised. It's there, the red line. It was, all we did was, we're adding a 216 position, so if you look in the upper right-hand corner of the job description that's attached, you'll see that it's in red there, the 216, meaning, so that's what, we are adding that position.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up is consent for operations, and Ms. Ebaugh, I believe you are up, and you're going to talk to us about the total project cost for centralized energy plant for Ida S. Baker, and golf, and golf, and golf.
The answer is yes, this is a total, this is the final cost.
And I ask that just for everyone's information, so that they would realize that we're in the final phase.
Yes, we are.
And then the re-roofing at Cypress and at North, the question was, are these expenditures coming out of the Hesse's sales tax, since they are repairs? And I have that both projects are being paid for with referendum dollars. Were there any other questions on that?
So these are like re-roofing?
Correct.
Or maintenance, as opposed to what Dr. Decemore was saying before? Okay. No, you don't have to come back, okay. Thank you.
And that's all I have, unless there were some additional.
When we do have referendum dollars on an agenda for approval, if we could please put referendum in parentheses after those projects, it was my understanding that we were doing that.
Yes.
So I wasn't asking questions about referendum dollars, but it's really important that I see that. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for good of the order? Okay, seeing none.
Are we giving comments? Okay, well then, yes, I do have something for good of the order.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would like to bring up our discussion about the attorney, and about hiring the attorney. And basically, in the minutes on 2/25, we discussed the viable candidate for an attorney, and in the minutes it stated that we said, number one, that staff would negotiate a contract with Ms. Bruno. And Ms. Vaughn asked about the next steps. The board attorney said you can direct staff to negotiate a contract for Ms. Bruno, and we did do that, but only for Ms. Bruno, and not for other, we did not approve to go any further with any other candidates, other than the one that was chosen. Dr. Pruitt asked if there were any back and forth issues, could she work with Ms. Fisher as the board chair to discuss these issues, and it was agreed unanimously by the board to do that. Attorney Quick gave a reaffirming email stating the vote and redirecting Dr. Pruitt to follow the board's request. I sent an email as well, asking Ms. Patrika to stop interfering with the process. The board certification piece that continues to come up in the job description, basically, we were, at least I did, I assumed that the three candidates that had been vetted and given to us to interview had the minimum qualifications, and that would include Ms. Bruno. If this was a deal breaker, then it should have been stated differently in the job description. And minimum qualifications, it states in the job description, certification, eligibility for certification, or such alternatives to the above qualifications, as the board finds acceptable. That could be allowing a certain amount of time to get that qualification completed. No other attorneys, including Mr. Williams, the chief counsel, have board certification, so I believe that we need to move forward with what we have decided. And also, in my opinion, in reading 1.052B, Ms. Patrika is violating that particular policy, which says. Attorney, can you read that for us, please?
Let me just turn into it now.
105.
You said 105.
2B. 2B. Yes.
It's under subsection 2, says community conduct. Sub-B, recognize that individual board members have no authority to speak, give directives, or make decisions on behalf of the school board unless the board grants such authority.
Right, and we did not give anyone other than Ms. Fisher the authority to move forward on doing anything else with the consensus that the board had decided. So I am asking that we just move forward. I don't know where we're at with giving Ms. Bruno the contract, has it, where are we in that process?
So Attorney Quick and his partner have reviewed the contract and made comments and edits. I reviewed the contract and submitted my edits, and as far as I know, we are moving forward.
And when, when was that done? Has she achieved, I mean, has she been given the contract to review?
She actually received it, I think it was today.
Yeah.
From Mary.
I know they were working on the edits, Mr. Williams, Mr. Quick, so I'm not sure if it's been sent to her, or were the edits still being made?
You know, we have no other edits from our end. I know that Chair Fisher had a question, which I think I hopefully responded to.
Yes.
But we have no other edits on our end.
Well, my concern is the time factor, you know, if we keep putting it off and putting it off, will it be available for tomorrow night's meeting?
Well, I don't think anybody's been putting it off. It's been, we've been working on it since we were given that directive to do so.
Okay. Well, my question is, will we have it for tomorrow's agenda?
I don't know if it'll be signed and executed at that time, because I'm not sure, A, if she's received it, and then she has to have her opportunity if she wants to request changes and negotiate that, you know, if there's any changes that need to be made, so I would think that's a, that would be pretty aggressive in my mind, but.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, did we, were we asked to weigh in on the contract? Because I do have a comment about the contract.
Again, there hasn't been one brought forward for your consideration yet, because there's still, I know, as of this morning, they were, Mr. Quick and Ms. Fisher and Mr. Williams, they were still making edits to it.
Before editing it, there should be an opportunity for board comments as well, certainly before it goes to Ms. Bruno.
Absolutely.
Because we don't want to be asked, getting the board to say, we're not comfortable with the contract.
Absolutely, right.
After it's been given to her.
Right, and I believe that everyone involved, the attorneys and human resources, has been following the process.
I think what Ms. Morgan is requesting is she wants to see it before it even.
Well, I have the draft, and I have a comment.
Okay, yeah.
But, so the question is, when is the board going to be asked to comment on the draft? Because you've all made edits, but we haven't had an opportunity to weigh in with our questions that may require edits.
I believe I forwarded it to the board.
Yes, but did you ask specifically for feedback?
I don't think so, but I think, I think.
Yeah, I mean, if you didn't ask feedback, I didn't know that we were this far in the process, so my apologies for misunderstanding, but I will send you my comments.
And my apologies, I'm sorry, I thought we indicated that at that last meeting, that anyone could make those comments, and some.
Well, at this point in time, I mean, to not have any more delays, why can't we just have the conversation right now regarding the contract? Because I'm, I mean, I just see this being prolonged with questions and reference checking and so forth like that. I wasn't aware that we would, we should, that was HR's, y'all did all the reference checking, correct?
Yes.
So there was no need to do additional reference checking, I don't think, unless it was on a personal level, I would understand that.
We, through our process, we did.
Right.
Yeah, and then.
That's what I thought.
Sent, sent her the fingerprinting information and those, those kind of perfunctory kind of things.
Right now, the details are the actual contract.
Correct.
So in the past, remind me, how did we do that before with the contract and everything?
In terms of comments received back?
When we had Mr. Dodeck, we, if I recall, we saw the contract and we moved forward.
When we had Mr. Dodeck, if I recall, we saw the contract and we moved forward.
Correct.
And he was our only candidate.
Right.
Eligible candidate at the time.
Right. Well, and that's kind of where, I mean, we've made, we've picked our candidate, so other than we just need to get the finalization of the contract.
Right. So I think we just have to complete the process and allow Ms. Bruno the opportunity to give her comments. But if anyone does have further comments on the contract, please forward them to...
Well, my question is, shouldn't that be a sunshine thing? I mean, should we have, if we have additional questions regarding the, we have to do the contract, then it should be now. Or a workshop, I don't know how, I mean, so I'm asking.
Okay, well, this is, this is at our workshop and it's for good of the order, so Ms. Morgan, do you want to send your comment, or do you want to provide it now?
Provide it. Let me just make, I really only have one major one that probably is worth discussion. And that is the duties of Dupree Bruno. And it is item number P. And he reads, perform all other duties assigned by the board consistent with the training and expertise of Dupree Bruno. And I would add, and, a Florida board certified attorney. So in other words, the expectations would be that this person can, is capable of doing the job of a Florida board certified attorney, even if they are not a board certified attorney. Is that, do you understand what I'm getting at?
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah. So, perform all other duties assigned by the board consistent with the training and expertise. And I would add, and, the expertise of a certified, of a board certi, of an education board certified attorney. Because we cannot limit our expectations to her current training and expertise. Our expectation is that she is going to be able to perform all of the duties of a school board attorney, and therefore, that expectation should be written into the contract.
The way I drafted it, and I'll take directive from the board, but the way I drafted it, and I think it's consistent with what you said, Ms. Morgan, I just flipped it a little bit, which would be reads, and then it would say, and that of an attorney certified by the Florida bar in education law, period.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Well, I have a bunch of comments on the contract, but I want to go back, if I may, to what Ms. Gittens said. Ms. Gittens, I'm sorry if you don't like my approach to this. I really do believe that I'm doing my due diligence. Two of the most important things we as board members do is hire a superintendent and a board attorney. And I think the other most important thing we do is adopt policy. And I felt it necessary to do my due diligence, to not just rely on a check of references. Frankly, when I got the references, I was very surprised that there were no legal references for the candidate that we have reached consensus to hire. And we're talking about the process. As I look at the process, I have significant concerns. When you look at the training that was provided to us by FSBA on how to hire a board attorney, we've not followed any of that advice. We have had, we've received and read resumes, and we have had surface-level public interviews. And I can't speak to the quality of the interviews that took place one-on-one, but we have not requested a writing sample. We have not requested performance in real-world environments.
But point of order, excuse me, but we as a board decided to follow the process that we had been given by HR. At the time we were given that process, if there were questions about something being omitted or not included, it should have been brought up at that time. We all agreed that this was the process that we would go through. And to come back now and to add things to what we as a board had decided, I continue to go back to 1052B. You did not come to the board to ask us if that was what we wanted to do.
In the interest of transparency and allowing the public to see what goes into my decision-making process, and given the fact that this board has not yet made a decision, I think that this discussion is very important. Until we take a vote, no decision has been made. And again, it's, to me, it's real, this is one of the most important things that we do. And because we agreed to a flawed process, does not mean that we should stop there. I believe upon reflection that the process was flawed.
But you agreed to it.
And I think that we should, I didn't vote on it. Ms. Gittens, I did not vote on it. And what I'm asking for, listen, this is not personal. This is not personal at all. I see Ms. Bruno in the audience, she's a Patriots fan. I mean, there's no better way to bond with me than to be a Patriots fan. This is not personal. This is about my responsibility as a board member to make sure that we have the most qualified board attorney available to us. And regardless of the decision, when this board makes a final decision, I will do everything in my power to make sure that the person we hire is the most successful board attorney in the state of Florida. But I want us as a board to not rush through a process and not stick with a process that is flawed, because we have done that up to this point. So all I'm asking, all I'm asking is that we give this a couple weeks. Let's get writing samples from the candidates. Let's put them in real-world scenarios, whether that be a mock board meeting.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I need to ask you one question, please. If Heather had been the candidate, would the process have been okay?
Ms. Gittens, point of order, please. Okay, we're not going to have an argument at the table. We, as a board, were, we had a consensus, which according to our protocols, we go with a consensus, okay? That was one thing. We did not have a formal vote. But there were some policy and protocol issues in people wanting to change the process afterwards. We did not have any request to change the process in advance of the interviews. So I don't understand really why we are having this conversation. And I think that we need to follow the process as it exists and as we agreed to it originally, and then we can come to a vote.
If I may, that was the purpose of my comments today, was to ask for a change in the process. Upon reflection and upon doing more research over the past two weeks, I mean, I'm not an HR specialist, so I've not interviewed and hired any high-level employees ever in an organization of this size. So again, in doing my due diligence and looking back and seeing the process we've gone through, I was going to raise this as good of the order to ask for an extended interview process to include interview exercises. And all I'm asking is that we, we have, all of us, all seven of us, have a level of confidence and a level of comfort in making what, to me, is one of the most important decisions we as a board make, so...
Just one minute, Mrs. Vaughn, but then what I hear you saying is that, that I'm going to now poll the board and see if we have a majority of board members who want to back up and change the process.
That would be, that would be my request as the chair, yes.
Okay. Then, board members, if you...
Can I just make my comment first?
Point of order.
Excuse me. If you want to back up and change the process and add steps to it, please indicate by raising your thumb affirmatively.
Comment?
No, she took the vote already.
Okay. Then Ms. Vaughn, then Ms. Morgan.
My comment is, this is a very serious discussion. And I was hoping that last week we could have had a special meeting to cover some of these questions. When we first started having the after-the-fact tactics to try to change our minds, those five of us who voted and used our heads, not our hearts, on this, I find it very insulting that a couple of the board members are questioning my decision-making and saying that because I have a difference of opinion from them, from the two of them, that I am somehow not qualified, that I somehow didn't carefully consider other things, that I would change my mind with a barrage of outside information that I may or may not have already looked at, but it was assumed that I made a stupid decision and it was one of emotion. What I'm saying is, this is very important. I'm not going to change my mind because I did my due diligence. I feel comfortable with my decision. I don't feel comfortable with receiving non-verbatim interviews from a board member. From other, I don't feel comfortable with any of that. I feel like that did not go along with any of our protocols. If we are speaking as a board, if we're speaking as a board with a five to consensus, we are speaking, we gave the directive.
Right, thank you. We did do that by consensus.
Can we do this when we have more time and we don't have a 90-minute briefing ahead of us?
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, so I would agree with Ms. Patrica that it is a flawed process. And as a result of a flawed process, we do not necessarily know for a fact that we have the best candidate, that we are advancing to the consent agenda. That being said, I recognize that this board has absolutely no appetite for examining its process or conduct. And so I will support the majority of the board.
Thank you.
And I want to be on the record that I do believe that we have not, this is a flawed process. It was a flawed process. We did not do our job. And therefore, we cannot be confident that we have made the right decision. But I will, I will go with the majority of the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Patrica.
Agreed 100%. There clearly is no appetite to return to the process. So if I may move on to my contract comments.
Yes, please.
Attorney Quick, why isn't school district capitalized throughout the contract? On the now, therefore clause, in consideration of the premises, should be promises. Paragraph two, term of the agreement, I am not comfortable with anything longer than one year. This is not a, we're not in a position where we are luring a board attorney or an assistant board attorney away from another district. So I'm not comfortable with anything longer than one year. Paragraph five, compensation, again, I'm not comfortable with anything more than one year. And is there a way that we can verify current earnings? I know, Dr. Pruitt, you and I had discussed that. It's come, the recommendation was made to me by a community member that we look at Attorney Bruno's last three years of tax returns to determine what the market dictates for her services at this time. And as good stores of taxpayer dollars, we certainly don't want to pay more than that. We don't want to pay more than what the market dictates, understanding that there's a benefit package here that's not necessarily associated with owning your own firm. I've got more. Paragraph six, C, the 5% in parentheses is not filled in, that's blank. Paragraph seven, automobile expense, I would prefer to see one or the other, a fleet vehicle or reimbursement for mileage. And because a fleet vehicle is cheaper, I'd prefer to limit it just to that.
I think that's consistent with what you have, though, with your other district employees. I think that was why.
Not the superintendent. I think the superintendent is limited to, oh, maybe it is. Dr. Atkins, are you both? Are you just a fleet vehicle? Because I know we took away a travel stipend for you or a car stipend for you.
Change, yeah.
Yeah, I originally had a car stipend and I changed that from a car stipend to just a fleet vehicle.
But does, is the, does...
If there's no fleet vehicle available, then it would go to mileage like we would do with any employee.
Okay, paragraph nine, I think it's paragraph nine, I might be off, it looks like seven, eight, nine. Status as certified education law expert. I'd like to see language added that it must, certification must be achieved by the 2021 administration of the education law certification examination.
Okay, may I interrupt there? Because you know that's not possible.
I don't know that that's not possible.
Well, the documentation that you got from...
Ms. Gittens, please, let's, let's let Mrs. Patrica finish.
Yes.
And then you can...
Dupree Bruno will continue to maintain her Florida bar certification in education law. And then there should be a word in there during or for the term of this agreement and any subsequent renewal? Attorney Quick, do you see that?
I'm writing this all down.
And then there's a series of duties that Attorney Bruno is to perform. And there's no consistency there with regard to word in each one of those. Sometimes it's a noun, sometimes it's a verb. Should be a verb across the board. Item J, review and approve as to content and form all contracts and rules entered into on behalf of the board. That is part of the job description for the board attorney. It's not just approval as to form, it's approval as to content and form.
I mean, these were pulled from what was posted, so I'm happy to make these changes. Because I do agree with you, I think that it does need to, and in practice, it has been approval as to content, not just form, but what was actually advertised, I believe, was just form. But in practice, that is correct, yes.
Item 13, termination. I'd like to see sub-paragraph under A added to include either a reference to competencies or incompetencies. I'm not sure which would be legally more permissible. And is there somewhere in there failure to fulfill the requirements of the contract? Is that already in there? Or would that just be considered a straight breach? If a term of the contract is not fulfilled?
That would be a breach, but I mean, if you want to include it, it wouldn't hurt.
I think, I think that for termination purposes, I think that makes sense to add that along with a statement of competencies or incompetencies. And then B, there's no consistency with regard to the use of numbers. You have 66, or 60-day written out with no 60 in parentheses. You need to make sure the 60 and the numbers are in parentheses after the use of numbers throughout the contract.
Which number was that, I'm sorry?
That is B, that's actually throughout the contract. I made that note throughout the contract. And then in that last sentence, Attorney Bruno is referred to as his salary and benefits as if he was a full-time employee. And I know that use of pronouns is sort of an issue, but I'm not sure which pronoun you'd like to be referred to by. Maybe you should get with her on that. 14, again, I'm not comfortable with anything beyond a one-year agreement to begin. And so the board agrees to vote no later than six months before the expiration of a one-year term of this agreement, and whether or not to extend the term for an additional two years. I'd be comfortable extending for two years after one year of employment. I have the same question about the public records language. Why and by whom was that language added?
It was added by us to ensure that the, to ensure that your board attorney is aware of the obligations of the public records law, which I know she is, but as your attorney, I just wanted to make sure that was included into the agreement for purposes of, like you said, if there was a potential breach, if the person was not retaining public records, then you would have a record that it was at least in your contract and you wouldn't have to refer back to the statutes for it.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Vaughn. I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Vaughn.
Okay.
I'm almost speechless to an extent. And now that I do have the floor, I will still make the comment that if there had been a different candidate, would all of this have been the same? But that's rhetorical. Some of the comments that you make, Ms. Patrica, and I'm not attacking you, but I'm just saying it's, some of the things that are said are just not, I know.
Let's keep it to the facts.
I am keeping it to the facts. I am keeping it to the facts. The facts of saying some of the things like there were a multitude of errors in the, in her resume, some of the other things that were said. I just feel like doing the deeper dive and all that. So I, I do have a question. Who actually did the deeper dive and who contacted each of the resort, references?
The references were conducted by Lynn Harrell.
I'm confused only because with Ms. Patrica's email, the way she stated it, I assumed that it was her that did the calling.
I don't know what you're referring to.
I, I already said that in doing my due diligence, I personally reached out to the references and I asked if that was permissible. I asked if that was in any way in violation of the law before I reached out to them. And I was told that no, it was not.
By whom?
I informed, I don't answer to you, Ms. Gittens.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I, I'm not, I'm not sure that by whom is really necessary, but I'm sorry that you didn't see this as me doing my due diligence. I've worked really hard on this issue and, and I'm sorry that you don't like the way that I approached it, but this is.
I agree that you have.
This is how I approach things. This is what I do.
And I agree that you've worked very hard.
I do a ton of research and I didn't mean to insult anybody by providing you with the research that I conducted on my own. I was, again, in the interest of transparency, I was trying to share as much information as humanly possible with all of my colleagues. That being said, I think, I think that we've decided that we will enter into a contract with Ms. Bruno.
I'll let you finish. May I finish?
Let Ms. Gittens finish.
Can we keep it to that discussion?
The other concern I have was the individual references that were called on, first of all, we, there was no real need to do references on Heather because she was not our choice. But the references that were done were all professional. The references that you showed us for Ms. Bruno, her priest and a personal friend, I am sure there were professional references that could have been called.
Those were the references Ms. Bruno provided.
Did you receive any names of?
Ms. Patrica asked me for the references that Ms. Bruno provided in her application process, and those were the references that I provided her. Now, I did contact Ms. Bruno for two professional references for people who had been clients of hers. That's what we do in our normal scope of HR when somebody owns their own business, which basically her being in a law partnership, that's what we do is, is for someone who has worked in a professional capacity as a client. And those are the references that we do our official HR form on.
But if she has a partner, wouldn't that have been a suitable professional person?
Yes. So, so Dr. Pruitt's office interviewed the references that were provided.
Well, actually, Ms. Patrica did.
And so, board members, because there was no vote, we are, we were all within the scope of the law to contact any of the references. I myself did that. I did not share it with everyone else. It was for my own information to help me in making my decision. And I did it before our decision was, before our consensus was taken at that table. However, we, you know, we are not here to sanction one another. We're here to work together as a team and so, and to follow our own policies and protocols. So at this time, Mrs. Morgan and then Ms. Vaughn, and then I'll ask for consensus on whether or not we want to. Okay.
So I actually, thank you, Ms. Patrica. I did meant, mean to bring up Section 9 also. I would just like, I don't know whether it's possible to happen within the term of this contract, but I would like some understanding that there is an obligation of Attorney Bruno to become certified at the earliest possible moment. I don't know how to do that. I would just, you know, it says, we, we will pay for her to do all of this, but there's no expectation that the process will be completed. And I think there needs to be an expectation that the process will be completed. That's number one. And then I would agree also with Ms. Patrica, I would go for a one-year contract with a two-year extension.
Can I, can I speak to the certification issue? Because it was raised as a question. Just to provide clarity.
Let the attorney speak to it.
All right. So the certification is possible within a year. You know, I've, I've looked at that. There are four FSBA conferences per year where CLEs specific to education law are provided. In addition to that, Attorney Bruno can quickly achieve the practical experience credits necessary to meet that requirement of the certification. And again, you know, with the job description saying required or eligible, I think one year is more than fair.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, then Mrs. Giovinelli, and then we'll take, did you have something, Ms. Jordan?
I might as well too, be sure.
I want, I want to reiterate that I am very comfortable with the decision I made when I gave my thumbs up on the consensus. I did not come here prepared to do a paragraph-by-paragraph editing of the contract. I want to remind Ms. Patrica especially, since she has said to me on a couple occasions, to please have professional courtesy. And since this was brought up now and some of us didn't come, not that I didn't read the contracts, of course I did, but I didn't come with my editing. And I feel that professional courtesy dictates that perhaps we should put this off. We're already 30 minutes from, I don't even know, we still have a 90-minute, we have a lot of staff sitting here. We've, we've, obviously, two people at least came prepared, maybe more, with their edits. I would like the opportunity to do my edits. I think we need to devote a meeting to this. I think that we need to be really careful of our, the way that, the way that we put forward some of these recommendations for the contract, because I have a gut feeling that maybe the new tactic is, let's make the contract so, don't even know what word, horrendous, I'll just say horrendous, that no one, that our current candidate will not even want to accept it.
And thank you, thank you for those thoughts. So that's why we're going to try to get through the rest of this. And then please send your edits to Mr. Quick or Ashley. And then we'll continue to move forward in the process.
Clarification. So directly to Mr. Quick or copy board and Mr. Quick? What are we doing? Because I think we, I think we need to be consistent on how we do this.
It's for information only, and you say board, don't respond, then you can copy the board.
Well, I mean, the only thing, if there's going to be multiple people writing, I would say do not include the entire board, because then it could be construed as a communication between the board. What's happening now is at a public meeting, but if you send it to me and then another board member sends something, it is definitely something that is going to come back to you for a vote. So I would recommend that you send it to me and do not copy.
And that's what I was thinking. And one other thing, let's take a look at, before we close this out, on the process. And that, so for instance, if one of us says one-year contract, somebody says 18 months, somebody says two years, how are, how are you going to convey that as we go to our discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I need to, if, if it's all across the board like that, I'm going to need to get guidance from, I as well as staff. We will need to get guidance from the board as to what the board is comfortable with. Is the board comfortable only with a one-year or 18 months or two years? Because that is, is a determination for the board. And so we will need to get guidance from you. We will also need to find out from Mr. Deputy Bruno.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just use that as an example. We need to cement the process, because the next thing is going to be, well, I didn't agree to that process. Let's agree to a process on all of the nuts and bolts and commas and clauses that we are inserting or omitting. Let's agree to a process of how that's going to come to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think you're asking, you know, basically, you want us to have as much information as possible so that we can put this contract together, so when it comes before you, that you will have something to vote on.
Right, that we know.
Maybe with a minor tweak here or there, but you will have the package that's being delivered to you.
That we know that paragraph 12, whatever that is, nobody had a question, but in paragraph 13, this and that, and.
Mrs. Vaughn, that's why I'm asking that everybody put their edits, if any, into writing and send them to Mr. Quick, because in the interest of time, we do have.
I'm just asking how it's going to be presented to us and then what we do. That's because it's been an issue here.
I think, Ms. Vaughn, I think you made a good point too, which was if there's not a comment, so if it's okay with the board, so you don't have to go through each and every paragraph and tell me, you know, no comment, I'm okay with it. If I don't hear something from you, I will assume you're at least okay with the language that's in here. You know, that would be, you know, individual to each board member, and then I can work with Dr. Pruitt and we can put this, and Mr. Williams, and we can put this together so that, you know, we can bring it back before the board. But, you know, unless you all prefer to have, to go through every paragraph and say, no issue, no issue, it may just be easier for you. If you don't raise it, I will assume that you have no issue with that, with whatever language is contained in that section.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Jordan.
One of the questions. I had, after all the emails recently, I had sent an email and I got a weird error. So how, my question was, your firm, how many of the attorneys that have been here, Mr. Gabriel, yourself, Mr. Bearman, are you certified in education law?
No, we're not. And to be quite honest, I'd say that the portion of my job that is educational, I've mentioned this before, is, is a small percentage. The bulk of what I do is, is, would be contract work, would be general, what I call general municipal work, that, that would span school districts as well as other municipalities or government issues.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. So I, we did go through the interview process. And my scoring was very, very close, both of, both of the candidates. However, I felt after personally interviewing Mrs. Bruno, far exceeded that. And, and so I feel very confident in the decision that we've already made. I don't see the need to change that. And I feel that we are going backwards instead of forwards. And that really is, is bothering me, because I don't, that is not a productive board, and that shows the dysfunction of actually this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
I was just going to say, I appreciate you doing your homework.
Thank you.
I contacted people as well. I do understand, I will be sending my questions or concern to Mr. Quick. And I definitely believe that when I was looking at everyone too, I was very close on both of them as well. But I did feel that Ms. Deputy Bruno was the best for me, what I felt. And I will have to say too, she's going to be closing a business, so for a one-year contract, that's pretty scary. And then my other question would be, what is the contract that our last attorney had, did it look like this? I guess we should look at that, because what are we changing that he had that now we need to change in this one?
It's my understanding that what this, that the draft that we had reviewed and gave comments and edits was based upon a form that's within the district, and then it was tweaked, and there were some additions that were made as well. But it's not exact, but it's, it's at least based upon a district format.
And then I also still, and I believe too, when we look at pay, we need to make sure we are looking at, we're always looking at market rates for everybody else. We need to make sure that we are keeping that in line with, with her as well. So that is my comments and.
And I guess for Dr. Pruitt, I guess, because I haven't been involved in the discussion for salary, would you look, are you looking for guidance in terms of discussion for, I'm just trying to get, because if they're, if you, you're all going to be sending the information for us to make edits, and you send it to me and I will make the edits and work with Dr. Pruitt. But I didn't know if you wanted to get guidance or if you feel like you have enough guidance on the salary issue already.
Well, I just, I'm sorry. I just want to just make sure that whatever we would have offered anybody in the world, whoever that may be, that that would be the same that we're coming to the table with and saying.
That's what it was based on, is the, the ERI evaluation of that position, along with what our other school board attorneys across the state making. And it, it is, it is right there. And it, that was based on, regardless of who the candidate was, an evaluation of paying for that position.
Okay.
You know, based on comparable salaries around the state, keeping in mind the, the market rate that that position is paying. And that is evaluating it not only with comparable school districts, but also through ERI, it also looks at that private-public and the, looking at the job description, you know, are there people, how many people report to the position? What's the breadth and depth of it? And that's what it's based on.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then my, just one, one last comment. I do believe that she would be able to complete that, the education certificate without a problem.
Thank you. Okay. So, well, I, I don't think we're going to take any more comments now, because we really need to get on to the briefing, and we have staff waiting much too patiently. So I don't think we need to take that consensus after all, based on what has been said subsequently. So thank you all, and we'll move right on to.
Madam Chair, do you want to have a date to get this information to me by? I just realized that we didn't set, I don't know if you want to set an outside date to have comments to me. And Board Member Patrica and Morgan, I wrote down everything that you said, and so I have it, so unless there's anything.
Today is Monday the 9th.
I highlighted the contract. I'll send it to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so today is Monday the 9th. Is Thursday the 12th too soon? Or is that agreeable?
So then I, I guess I just want to confirm, since Ms. Bruno's here, then, then she will not receive a copy of it until after that is done. I just want to confirm that, so that she won't get a copy of it then until potentially Friday or Monday.
Can we request that it be by Friday, at least? I mean.
Well, it, again, it depends on if, if everyone is timely in submitting it, and then how much time it takes Mr. Quick and Mr. Williams to make sure. Because if, if seven of you have seven different things for one of the paragraphs, he's going to need some time. So if, if you all turn things in Thursday afternoon, I don't know that Friday would be reasonable if there is discussion that the board needs to have around some of the paragraphs. So I just, I want to be, I want to avoid the perception that we are stalling the process. So I just want to be upfront about the fact that it will take time, based on how long it takes for all of you to get the edits in.
Yeah. But we will move, I mean, we know that this is a priority for the board, so we, you know, we will move on this as quickly as possible, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Okay. At this time, seeing no other business, this workshop is concluded.